Mike, if I could have you try your mic just to make sure it works.
Testing, testing.
Thank you.
So my name is Margaret Stevens. I'm a news person at The Economist and I want to thank you all for coming and I especially want to thank all the candidates for being here. I have a little speech and then it's going to go real quick. Here we go. My name is Margaret Stevens, a news person at The Economist, got that. I've been working at a short time, but I can say I'm incredibly impressed by the level of engagement and with the hospitality of this community. It's an amazing place and you should all be proud to be here. Thanks for everyone who encouraged us to host this event. I know it's not going to be perfect and those are all my fault, so it's all on me. Thank you, thank you all of you for being here tonight. We are also filming this, so it'll be available, I believe, on YouTube and we'll post a link as soon as we have that set up. And if anybody would like to, you can also watch online in the lobby if you're more comfortable doing it that way. So again, thank you everyone who's here for attending, participating, asking great questions. Thank you to some amazing volunteers we have here tonight. It takes a lot of people to put this on, but I especially want to thank all the candidates for being here tonight. Serving as an elected official is, might be the second most thankless job in the world, but just running is the most thankless thing in the world. So thank you, thank you, thank you for doing that. We have already some questions. We're going to start with opening statements from each of the candidates. If you can all see down there, you'll have two minutes for your opening statement, one minute for each response, and you'll get a 30-second and then a 10-second warning. And I will introduce our great moderator Dean Mark. Thank you so much Dean for being here.
Thank you, Margaret, and thanks to The Economist for hosting this event tonight. I think she pretty much covered the rules well, so we will get started. I just have some playing cards here that are randomized, so that's how we're going to start. Whose number I draw will go first, and then we'll just proceed to the candidates left, the audience is right, and background, starting with the two-minute opening statement. Please identify yourself for people here that don't know you and tell us about yourself. So to start with, number five, which would be Kelly, will start us off.
Thank you. My name is Kelly Edmonds. I'm a father, a husband, a business leader, and a community volunteer. In those roles, I am constantly planning for a better future. As a corridor business leader, I have a proven track record of understanding and managing budgets, overseeing and guiding operations, and attracting and retaining the best workforce, all of which I've learned and modeled of elected to this board. There is unprecedented and deep division in our community. However, many of the issues on the table, some of the issues are very complex and there are not solutions to satisfy everyone. I know there are community members who don't want to change a single thing in our district, and I know others who are deeply concerned with the state of our district. However, I know there are two things that we all have in common, a love for Solon and for our kids. Beyond those issues, the community support for Solon schools is amazing. In response to that support, we need a board that will collaborate with the community and advocate for our teachers and staff. Our district is strong, but it can be better, and my professional experience gives me an excellent perspective on providing leadership and being accountable to those I serve. I know that if I'm elected, sitting on this board will be difficult and take a tremendous amount of time and energy. I have a lot of respect for the current board, and I know they have done their very best in difficult and challenging times. Know that I want to be an advocate for all of those in our community and want to examine and strengthen our policies so that Solon can be effective and efficient in the years ahead. I want to foster a culture of trust, innovation, productivity, and investment in our district. I promise to use my knowledge, education, and training to work with everyone who is willing to tackle the issues together, to agree on the common goal of making our district better and providing the best education for our children. Solon deserves the best, and I will continually push for excellence, ask the tough questions, and demand thorough and transparent answers. For dedicated and passionate leadership, I ask you to vote for me, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
My name is Cassie Robles, and I've been a proud member of the Solon community for over 20 years. My husband, Landon, and I have raised three children in the community. Ryan, a graduate, 2018. He now serves in the US Army at Vincenza, Italy. We have a son, Reese, who is in ninth grade, who's doing all the ninth grade things from music to sports, and Ruby, who is in sixth grade and just starting her middle school career. I have served in many facets in Solon over my 20 years. Started off as the parking rec board director, been serving on the board there. I have also helped volunteer for Cub Scouts. I've done youth sports and coached. I've done the local church ministry and youth leadership, and in the last couple of years, I have served on the Solon Improvement Advisory Committee. I'm very passionate when it comes to supporting kids and the opportunity to bestow leadership skills in an engaging and a positive environment. I strive every day to live out these passions through my professional career in making sure that we are building products for educational solutions in a digital fashion. I've come alongside State Department of Education's, urban districts, and rural districts, just like Solon. I'm running for school board because I have made an effort to really make an impact on the national level, and it's time for me to make an impact here locally into the communities and which I call home. My approach has always been and always will be very collaborative in nature. I seek first to understand and to drive decision-making and always value those connections that we make as people, and at the center of everything that we do is the heart of the child, and that is what our focus is.
Good evening. Thank you all so much for attending tonight's forum. It is both exciting and humbling to live in a community where people are so engaged in our school system. My name is Stacy Munson, and I joined the Solon community in 1993. I graduated from Solon High School in 2001 and married a fellow Solon alum. I then left Solon to continue my education and start my career. My husband Jake and I chose to return to Solon in 2013 to raise our family. I have considered running for school board for several years and decided that now is the right time. Should I be elected to the school board, I would bring a true appreciation for our community, both past and present, a professional skill set uniquely suited for this type of work, and a desire to listen, learn, and understand. My focus and platform of this election is on people first, namely ensuring that we are putting our students first. Without a consistent focus on putting people first, we cannot and will not have long-term high-achieving outcomes for our students. And when I reference outcomes, I'm not only referring to standardized test scores and the percentage of our students who go on to complete their post-secondary education. I am also referring to high achievement as it relates to the mental health of our students, teacher and staff satisfaction and engagement, and a community perception that our school and school board listen to and understand concerns. I welcome the opportunity to discuss additional topics this evening.
Good evening. My name is Mike Woodher. I grew up in Eldora, Iowa, and have been proud to call Solon my home for the last three and a half years. My daughter started at Lakeview in kindergarten, and she's now in the fourth grade at Solon Intercity. Why am I running for the board? It's because I talk to people and ask questions, and I don't know about you, but when I ask questions, I hope that I'm going to be reassured by the answers, but instead I found that I had more concerns after hearing the answers. One of the biggest issues that I hope we'll talk about tonight is Solon's problem with teacher retention, and that's one of the first things that started getting me involved in this and a reason why I think I'd be a good person on the school board. Solon is losing its good experienced teachers because they are dissatisfied with some of the things that are going on here. And I don't claim to have all the answers, but I do have the ability to talk to people, and I think that's something that the school board absolutely needs to be doing more of, and I have seen that in my own. Solon has fantastic, but unless we keep those teachers, we are losing their expertise, we're losing their ability to help our new teachers, and we are impacting our future students because of that loss of expertise and knowledge. We need to talk to teachers who've left. We need to talk to teachers that are still here and solve the problem. Give them the resources they need so that they're not overworked, so that they are able to have the lines of communication open to get those problems solved. I am a good person to help with this issue and with other issues, in part because of my experience as a lawyer, and I'm not running away from that. I know what people think about lawyers. I probably know most of the jokes as well, but I can tell you that there are lawyers and there are lawyers, and when you need a lawyer, you need someone who's going to listen to you and fight for you, and my experience is in fighting for the underdog. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Erica Villerebeck. I've worked as a conservation officer with the Iowa D and R for the past 21 years. I'm currently serving as a sergeant who helps to oversee the officers in my district. My husband, Tom, and I moved with our two kids to Solon in 2013. My daughter, Andy, is currently a freshman, and my son, Silas, is in sixth grade. We chose this area of the county specifically because we've heard such great things about Solon schools, and there are many great things about Solon, the Solon district. We have outstanding facilities, talented and professional teachers, support staff and coaches, enthusiastic parents, and of course, our kids are the best. It's kind of like Lake Wobegon, where all the women are strong, all the men are good-looking, and all the children are of average. However, in the last couple of years, I began to hear about some of the troubling issues our teachers have faced. I've listened to many teachers talk about the extremely low morale, the fear of retribution, they feel if they speak up for themselves, not to mention, we've all probably noticed a huge number of teachers who are leaving our district for other districts. While it may be easier to stick our heads in the sand, pretend that everything is wonderful, and continue to push forward with the status quo, I believe doing so would be a disservice to the teachers, students, and in the long run, our district. No district is perfect. There are always improvements that can be made. I believe, like in any workplace, happy employees are productive employees. It is the job of a school board to ask tough questions and to be alert to ways our system can be improved. So that's why I'm here. I'm concerned for the future of our school district. I'm not a politician, and while I've tried to cram in as much knowledge as I can during the last couple of months, I don't claim to have all the solutions to the problems the coming school board will need to address. However, I do know that the only positive way forward is to pull our heads out of the sand, ask questions, acknowledge the issues, and work together to resolve them, and I'm willing to put in that work.
First of all, I'd like to start again. First of all, I'd like to thank Margaret Stevens, a Solon economist, for referencing to organize this forum. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Tim Brown. I've lived in Solon since 2001. I've got two grown sons who graduated from Solon High School, and I've had the privilege of being elected to the board three times by the Solon community. When first running for the board, I wanted to bring my background and life experiences to provide a focus on how we can invest meet the needs of all of our students, whether they excel or struggle academically, as well as to advocate for student educational opportunities to better prepare our students for life after high school. Once on the board, I've tried to bring a focus to data-driven continuous improvement and planning for our long-term needs as a district. As the district has grown, the needs of our students have continued to diversify. The families are moving here to provide their children with a quality education as a testament to the exceptional teaching by our staff and the support of our community. I'm proud to have served on this board, who despite oftentimes differences of opinion, has always kept a focus on what is best for our students and how to maximize their educational opportunities. As the board has planned for the future, we are well positioned to accommodate the upcoming growth, will also be able to provide high-quality educational opportunities to all the students as our class sizes continue to grow, our class numbers continue to grow. Hopefully, we can keep our class sizes fairly stable. But there's a lot of work in front of the district to try and make sure that we can accommodate what's to come, and that long-term planning is what's been charged to the board to look at, and I'm down to 10 seconds hopefully.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for The Economist, Dean. Thank you for the candidates. Having done this twice before, actually three times before, it's a little nerve-wracking to sit up here and be Googled with lights you can't see, but just let me introduce myself. My name is Dan Coons. I've been in the district for 18 years. I have a wife who's a teacher in the district. I have a 22-year-old son who'll graduate from you and I this year. Thank you, Mr. Munson. AJ, my youngest son's at South Coast State. My oldest daughter's at the State of St. Thomas in Minnesota, and I have a sixth grader. I came to this community with my wife 18 years ago for the school district. We searched through Iowa City and Solon, and we chose to come here. Like Cassie, I was very active in coaching my kids, and through that, I ended up meeting the head football coach. Long story short, 16 years later, I've been assistant varsity football coach. I've also been on the board. This will be, I'm running for my third term. I think the best thing I do in this district, or the most rewarding to me, is being able to interact with those kids on the field, to touch their lives in a way, and get to really know the families of this district. You are amazing people, and this is an amazing district. I feel honored to be a part of it. What am I most proud of as a board? Our academics continue to improve. You as a community, greater than 70% of you, said it was okay to build the buildings that we have. We've had great donations from families. We have great extracurriculars, music, sports, but probably my most important thing that Tim and I have done is we created a mental health initiative for our students in this district. Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. Now onto the questions. Got a lot of different questions on a wide range of topics. Thanks to everyone for submitting them in. I'm going to try and do my best. There's a lot that are similar in context, so kind of merge in some, or if you don't hear your exact question, hopefully I'm hitting on the topic of the question you submitted. As a reminder, we have one minute for the questions, and the first one, sorry, the first one is going to go to Tim Brown. And the question is, what is the role of the school board, and can you identify three responsibilities?
I can do that. I don't even need my notes. So at the end of the day, the school board is charged by Iowa law with setting policy and providing direction to the district and holding the system accountable. Some of the fun and exciting things we get to do are review the bills every month. That's my favorite job, is getting a PDF of every bill that we pay and making sure that they're, that they seem appropriate. It's not exciting, but it's one of the things we're charged with doing. I think some of the most important work we do is on the visioning. Periodically, we go through the mission and vision statement, get input from the staff, get input from the community. I think that's one of the most important things we do in terms of deciding where we're going to go as a district and getting by. The next thing that I'll call out from that standpoint is, you know, is the policy, and again, not exciting, but it is the process by which putting the guardrails up on the district saying, these are the things we can do, these are the things we can't do, and making sure they align with state law.
Well, it's pretty hard when you're already a board member, and then the board member ahead of you talks about what your roles are as a board member. So I will say this, when I started this, I had no idea really what my job was as a board member, and I realized I only had one employee that I got to supervise, and so five of us supervised Davis's idol, who's a superintendent. The other thing is that we enforce policy, like Tim said, and we set mission and vision for the district. I think it's important to realize that, I know, I think it was Rick Chelicka and Adam Kaluska went to a board meeting in November. I couldn't go because we were in the state championship, but that being said, other school districts don't talk to their superintendents. I spend at least hours a month in Davis's office talking to him about our policies and things that I need to see, and that's it.
All right, the role of the school board is to work with communities, educators, the administration, to approve student achievement. The second item would be to establish policy within the laws and the guidelines set by the Department of Education, and the third thing would be to be responsive to the community's values, beliefs, and priorities. I want to focus on that third part. The reason I got involved in this race for school board was that I talked to so many people that were concerned with how things were going, not only with COVID, but with a lot of issues in our district, and there seems to be a lack of reaching out to the community or a lack of response to the community's concerns. And I just want to make it clear that that is a top priority in mind, that third item, to be responsive to the community, the priorities of the community.
I think similar to Kelly, I believe that the board's role is to be a voice of the community, is to really represent all of the parents and the students and the teachers and the faculty that are here. Obviously, there is some fiduciary responsibility that the board will have to do to maintain the budget and to sustain our growth, but most importantly about the growth is we need to plan for the future. One of the phrases I use often in my work is we need to skate to where the puck is going to be, not to where the puck currently is. And so as we expand and as we grow as a community, we need to look to the future and we need to set policy, a strategic direction, that will get us to where we are going, not to where we currently are.
I believe that three primary responsibilities of the board are to listen, to learn, and to plan. The listening is absolutely a key component of any board member. We must understand and seek to understand what our community wants, what the concerns are, what are people talking about, and unless we listen, there's no way to fully understand that. I also believe that if a school board member doesn't come to the board fully understanding every element of how a school or a school district operates, so as a board member, we must continue to learn. And then finally, as Cassie mentioned, the planning is key. We need to plan not only for today, but also for tomorrow, and to be thinking ahead. What do our students need? What do we need to be thinking about? This includes financial priorities as well as long-term planning.
The role of the school board is two things, leadership and community service, and these are not inconsistent. They are both bottom-up activities. People think about leadership as top-down. It's not. Leadership means that you need to know what's going on, and you do that by hearing every voice. You do that by asking questions, and this has to be active. You can't just hear one answer and think that you know what's really happening. You have to ask yourself what voices are not being heard. You have to seek them out. The job is to learn those things. The job is to then be responsive to the community and provide leadership that's consistent with what the community needs. And sometimes that involves making difficult decisions, whether it's with regard to finances or whether it's with regard to public health. And once you have put in that work, then you're prepared to do that.
Well, it's nice to go last, I guess. So I think one of the main roles of the school board is to just maintain this long view, to consistently steer the school system to meet its mission statement, and develop long-range goals and action steps to do that. You know, the school board is in charge of hiring a superintendent and also maintaining his or her accountability and evaluations and things like that. Obviously, you know, you've heard a lot of answers, and I agree with them, that, you know, the job on the school board is to initiate policy, and I agree with Mike in terms of the most, one of the most important things the school board does is to ask questions, and I think we've had a lack of that. We need to really ask questions and have detailed and professional discourse about those questions.
All right, thank you. The next question, we're going to start with Stacy, and it's actually two questions in one. First, please list how many, or state how many school board meetings you have attended in the last year, and then how have you been involved in the community and school districts specifically?
I believe that I have attended two virtual school board meetings over the last year. My involvement in the community and the school, you know, certainly my children are all students here at Solon. I have participated in a variety of educational opportunities at the high school, where I have presented career opportunities and shared some of my career experiences with high school students, various volunteer activities in my students' classrooms when we had parties, able to participate in those, and then other general community involvement, volunteer coaching and those types of things, not necessarily associated with the school directly, but certainly with our students. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe just one in the last year. Obviously, the last year has been a little bit more difficult. In terms of leadership and community service, having just moved to this area three and a half years ago, I feel that I'm still getting my feet wet to some degree, but I'm working to make that more and more a part of my life as it was my previous hometown. One of the things I've been doing, I'm on the board and have been for the past year of the ARC of East Central Iowa, it is an organization that serves people, adults and children with developmental disabilities, and I think that shows where my focus is now, has been in the past, and will be, serving on this board, in terms of making sure that everyone gets the help that they need, because every person's different. Every person is a different type and amount of help, and I think that is very, very important. Thank you.
I too have only attended board meetings online, and I've gone back and watched all the ones that are available online. In terms of community service, my whole career revolves around community service. It's what I do for my job. But in terms of specifically with the school, I, probably the main thing, I run an after-school program for Solon kids that's called Wild Things, where we, I basically take the group of kids out to natural areas around, around the area and do some environmental education, work with them, let them explore and play outdoors, which I think is something kids are sort of lacking these days. So that's probably the main thing I do within the, in the school, other than career talks and things like that, and activities with my kids, classes.
So depends on how far back I go. It started off with helping out of classrooms way back in the day. More recently, it's focused on things like helping out with interns who come into my office and do coding and office and, and decoding and all kinds of fun, exciting things. Helped out with mock interviews in high school, those are always fun. I enjoyed going down to the elementary school when they do reading days. Those are always a great opportunity to kind of go to teachers and the students. Before I even got on the board, I was involved in the governance committee. And then from there, I went and been serving on the board for 11 years. And then you'll also find me generally at the basketball scorers table because my son volunteered me for that many, many years ago and I haven't been able to figure out how to not do it. So they don't seem to take no when you say, I don't know if I have time this year, so every year I wind up back there, so. I did miss a school board meeting because I was on call doing surgery, but I've been there. I volunteered, you've heard already, what I've done. I think that probably the most rewarding thing is I'm a physician assistant in the private orthopedic group down in Hennessey. I've had the pleasure of having several of our students come shadow me. And I've had several of those students go into PA school and medical school and some go into nursing school. And so I think those are probably the most rewarding things.
Definitely logged on virtually to three and I think it was a portion of the fourth school board meeting. And it's all been in the last 18 months or I think been less than that since the meetings went virtually. My community involvement, I've been involved with my son, we have an eighth grader, I'm sorry, eight-year-old and a three-year-old. And they're just getting involved in activities. I was an assistant coach for baseball over the summer. I am a member of the board directors of Horizon's in Cedar Rapids. I've volunteered for Meals on Wheels in Cedar Rapids and I've been so for about nine years. I volunteer for HACAP, which is a food bank in Cedar Rapids, the United Way of Eastern Iowa, the Economic Society in Cedar Rapids. My company, AmeriConstruction, we, every quarter, we try to do a, we call it a kind surge in every community that we work in Eastern Iowa. And we have done things for the Ronald McDonald House Shelter House, Indian Creek Nature Center, just to name a few.
Board member attend, or school board member attendance, I have not physically attended any in the last year. I think I had someone submit and prepare a speech for me for one that I could not attend. As far as community involvement, I currently lead some 10th graders through youth group on Wednesday. I teach Sunday school at our local church almost every Sunday. I have done some open volleyball opportunities to open up volleyball from a coaching perspective using insight of the communities. I've done a lot of engagement with students throughout my involvement in the musics and the arts and as well as several different opportunities to engage with students through coaching opportunities.
Okay, thank you, everyone. The next question, we'll start with Erica. And the question is, "The topic of the last election was the level of transparency in our school district. Many believe there is an ongoing issue of decisions being made without sufficient input from teachers or parents. What will you do to improve communication with the community?" It's Erica's question.
Yeah, I'm thinking. I think transparency and communication is an issue. I know there's been some questions brought up about time, the times when the school board meetings are held and things like that in terms of being early in the morning when people are not usually able to attend. So I would think we would want to have meetings when people can attend the meetings. Transparency is very important. I think that school board members should be, and the superintendent and, and other administration should be answering emails when they're sent. I know that I personally have not, or I've sent emails that have not been responded to. In my job, I wear a body camera and record every interaction and I think that that's obviously not necessary for a school board member, but they should expect the same level of professional response that my community expects from me when they send me an email to work. So I'll stop because I think I've run out of time.
Communication is always a, always a struggle. After the last election, one of the topics we brought up was how do we, how do we improve that communication network? We tried doing listening posts, we scattered around at various events and got to spend an hour, hour and a half sitting at a table and people would wave at us as they went by despite advertising that they're going on. So communication's like a two-way street. I know that I read all the emails that come in, I try to respond to every person that reads the emails. I don't respond necessarily to every email. Sometimes they are statements and not questions, or sometimes I'm copying an email that goes to the admin. And so I think it is, it is a challenge and the role of the board is to kind of understand that. And I think what I try to do is have conversations, whether it's at church or it's volunteering at scouts, and better understand what people are, are bringing to the table. So that, that's the focus of how can we build those relationships to have a better understanding of what's going on? And I think a broad board that has different connections will help with that. I'll echo Tim's thing. It's hard, hard to get people to pay attention until it's time to pay attention. I know Tim did a bunch of stuff about finance and everyone's like, well, why don't you share? Well, we share in every board meeting. So if you want to come to the board meeting, you can learn about finance. As far as the emails go, our, as a board, without the board president answering emails, I read all emails. If there are things I'm concerned about, I will respond or I will directly talk to Davis. But I, I'll be honest with you, I'd rather respond to them, I read them. As far as getting communication out to you, we used to just have minutes. We've now had recordings. I think the pandemic has helped us with recordings and, and things that are easier for people to do. But to be honest with you, most time I'm sitting in the room with the five board members, okay, and superintendent and the admin. So you can say you want this stuff, but nobody comes.
I disagree with the fact that nobody comes. I think, and since I've been monitoring my business, I'll be virtually over the last year plus, you know, they're, they're held in a very small room, they don't allow for a lot of public to attend. And I think the first thing we need to do is move those meetings to a larger venue to let all the public also come to be part of it. I think that, I'm sorry, I didn't say one virtual, but I attended three or four over the last year. One of the things that we need to do is do social media more, more as a district. My competitors here have talked about, posted about finance and while it's true that Tim has, Tim has talked about some of the finance aspects of the district, they've only been really in response to the questions that have been posed. And, you know, I know obviously the board minutes show the board, the budget presentations and anyone can go and find those, but it's really complex and a lot of the issues in our district are complex. And I think if education or awareness initiative by the boards and help the public understand what the board's doing would go a long way.
So perception becomes reality. And the perception right now is that there's a lack of transparency and there's a lack of communication. Well, let's come together and find the solution that would work for all. Perhaps we can make sure that the community is more aware, we can surface a lot more of the myths, maybe the agenda, make sure it's out there, put it in the paper so people are aware of the topics that are going to happen. Could we have quarterly business reviews? Could we do something like that that would surface the data a lot more? Let's come together collectively for a solution. Communication and transparency have certainly been a very hot topic in recent weeks and it's incredibly important. I do believe that there is a perception among some that there is not adequate communication or transparency with our administrators or our board. I believe that in order to improve that, we need to understand what improved communication or improved transparency would look like to those folks who are concerned. So, you know, and that's part of coming together and having some open dialogue about that. I don't want to pretend that I would assume what good or open communication looks like to someone else. We need to understand what works for the majority of our parents and our families, our teachers and our students, and then work through those solutions together.
So first of all, there's just no substitute for making yourself available and putting in the work. It takes time to be transparent, it takes time to have communication, and the board needs to be putting in that work. I think everyone agrees on that. But I think the more important underlying issue is that good communication focuses on the why. When people want something from you, when people tell you what they want, you need to not understand what they're asking for, you need to understand why so that you can serve them. And I don't think that why question is being asked often enough. The other part of that is that when the board makes decisions, people don't just need to know what decisions are being made, they need to understand why. And I hope in the answers I give tonight and in the answers I've given to written questions in the papers in the past, I make very clear why I think what I think. And I'm certainly willing, I'm used to arguing if people disagree. I look forward to hearing from you as well.
Thank you. We only have a limited amount of time and questions here, so please refrain from applause during the, especially during the candidates answering the questions. And I'm sure they'll be happy to answer individual questions after the forum, so if we could just be quiet while they're giving answers to questions, I would appreciate that. Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Michael. And the question is, "What are your plans for the projected growth in the Solon Community School District?"
Our community is certainly growing. It's amazing the number of new homes that are being built. I think that specific plans obviously require a big focus on finance that's probably beyond the scope of a one-minute answer. So far, the community has been behind the growth that we've seen so far. Been talked about the construction of the schools. I think that one very important thing to consider is that we keep the growth together as a community. And by that I mean that as we grow, we get new teachers. Those teachers are part of this community, they should be able to be a part of this community. And that we also keep the community involved in, as new schools need to be built, where that will happen, how the growth will look, what grades it's going to be affecting. These are all things that are, require detailed consideration, detailed answers. And I'm afraid I don't have a better answer than saying that, you know, I will do the work, listen to people, and take very careful consideration of all these issues as the time comes. Thank you.
I guess I would echo that in that I don't have a specific plan in terms of the growth of Solon, but I think what needs to be focused on with that growth is the fact that there's a nationwide teacher shortage. And in order to maintain the teachers that we have and not have them being shipped off to other districts where we then replace them with a first or second-year teacher is, is going to be even more of an issue when Solon grows as it's projected to. So I think that's one of the main points that we need to be looking at when we're, when we're coming up with strategic plans for population growth is how do we get good teachers and keep them here?
So growth has been on our radar for probably the entire time I've been in the district. We're in a good position in terms of people wanting to come here, but the challenges that provides is, as our teachers will understand, it's kids don't come and all go one class, you know, we're going to have 30 kids and they're all going to go in fifth grade, so we're going to have one teacher that gets sprinkled around the district. And we've got to accommodate those changes. As we look to the future, we've got to look at what our facilities need. So we've got a third grade where it'll have to go on to the intermediate building, and so we've got to look at how we're going to finance that. To do that, we've got to pay down the debts we've got for the buildings that we've already built. We've got to look at how do we balance class size with the addition of new opportunities for students? So as we grow, there's a desire for more electives at the high school, there's a desire for additional extracurricular activities, and so there's a balancing act. And so that all comes down to dollars and the district has to balance all those things out to try and meet the needs and expectations of the community. Again, following the other board leader. So yeah, we already have a plan for growth with the SIS building. We actually had that designed when we built it, just not knowing what our growth would be. We do meet with the city, we met with the city this summer, so they give us ideas like, all right, the Watts thing is coming, there's a couple other places coming, so we can start to see and plan. I was on the Buildings and Grounds Committee, actually with Rick Jedica, and we talked about this at length with, you know, where we are, where we're going to be. You know, and I agree, you know, recruiting and retaining teachers according to this, how do we balance class size? In the school board world, there are silos of money and you can only spend certain money under certain silos for certain things. So that makes it difficult too, but we have been watching it for some time.
I don't have a lot to add to the responses that have already been given. Knowing that the new facilities have been built in the last five or six years, we're, we're designed with the ability to expand and without having the numbers, the projections for growth in our community, I, I think that this is not going to be an emergency situation in the near term. There's plenty of time to examine the issue and find a solution. I think the bigger issue, as my colleagues have set up here, is that having appropriate teacher ratios and having enough teachers, maintaining, maintaining that, that balance and making sure that we're taking our teachers and attracting all those is the, is the larger issue to focus on.
One of the things that keeps me awake at night is making sure that kids' needs are met and that their unique needs are specifically met, whether it be literacy, could be numeracy, could be social and emotional. And so as we grow as a community, we need to think about the students first and their unique needs and how we can meet those needs as we grow as a community. How can we empower educators to maintain that intimacy, those smaller class sizes so that they can have those connections that are so vital to the growth around them? So as we look to the future, we need to maintain that as our measure of success. We need to maintain that so we can ensure that any student that walks through Solon Schools, their needs will be met at full. It's really exciting to live in a community that's growing as quickly as Solon has, but I also recognize that that presents some really unique challenges that a school board needs to consider. So when I think about what those challenges would be, I think of the numerous financial implications to that type of growth, also to the considerations for facilities and space. We need a place to house our students and our educators. Also, the necessary staff and other resources that we're going to need to serve and influx in students. And then finally, ongoing collaboration in order to ensure that we have the right facilities, we have the right financial plans in place and all of the resources necessary to serve our students. That's going to take collaboration with our educators, with our community, with our city, and a variety of other entities so that we are prepared as that growth erupts.
Thank you. The next question, we're going to start with Dana. And there's numerous questions submitted around teacher retention, so I'm kind of summarizing into one. "When referring to the success of Solon School District, board members are always praising the teachers for being such an incredible asset. However, it has been reported since 2015, we have lost over 60 teachers. How can the school district improve its ability to keep our teachers and create a better work environment? And what specific plans would you support or promote to stem the accelerated loss of our teaching staff?"
I got to put "lost" in some quotations. You may know, my wife's a teacher, so I know a lot of teachers and I know why a lot of people have left. Some of them left because they weren't happy. I won't agree with that. Some of them have retired, some of them have relocated. So I think the number is inflammatory for this board at this time. But I will say this, retaining teachers is important. The most important person in a classroom is the person standing at the front, always will be. And so part of what we have done in the last four years, our teachers have gotten a 14% raise. Now, we operate at about 80, what percent, 80, maybe about 80% of our money goes to teaching for teachers in our general fund. So we also have to run other bills, so it becomes difficult to pay more. Dean, can you repeat the question for me, please?
Sure, hang on. Just put it away. "When referring to the success, excuse me, success of Solon School District, board members are always praising the teachers for being such an incredible..." board members are always praising the teachers for being such an incredible asset. However, it has been reported since 2015, we have lost over 60 teachers. How can the school improve its ability to keep our teachers and create a better work environment? And what specific plans would you support or promote to stem the accelerated loss of our teaching staff?
Thanks, Dean. So in my outreach experience campaign, I've heard from a lot of teachers, and their voice is fairly overwhelming, that they don't feel empowered. And someone actually used the phrase that they're trained professionals acting as robots. Teachers aren't consulted with in this district when decisions are made, their opinions aren't valued. And I've heard from a lot of teachers that if they do speak up with their opinions or bring issues forward, that they're reprimanded. They're talked to about, they're either on board or not with the district. And there's not a lot of leeway there. In my research in this campaign, I've posted on Facebook that our average teacher salary is roughly $60,000 a year, actually a little bit less. And our surrounding districts pay our teachers more than that. Mount Vernon's 63 to 64, Cedar Rapids, Iowa City is closer to 70. We have to make sure that we create an environment that our teachers want to work in. We have to make sure that we give them salary and benefits that are required with our neighboring districts.
Talked before about the future growth and making sure that we have a sustainable model that will allow us to expand as we expand as a community. It is important that we instill a community and employability ratio that we really attract and retain good talent. And part of that is we need to make sure where we are undercompensating, we need to make that right. And where we are, where we see a job well done, we're rewarding those teachers accordingly. And we need to do so with fiscal responsibility. You always have trade-offs when you're balancing a budget. The buses, they're hard too. The associates, their job is hard too. And so we need to take all of this consideration as we look to retain the good talent that we have and reward them accordingly, as well as compensate where we feel like there is an undercompensation happening.
So when we talk about turnover among our teachers, I think this is a great example of balancing a people-first approach with some data-driven decision-making. So with teacher turnover, I would want to know, what's our turnover rate every year for the last five or so years? How does this compare to local and state benchmarks? Are we better than the benchmark, are we worse? And from there, determine what do we need to do with that information? If we are indeed worse than local benchmarks, we need to do some action planning around that information and determine what are the concerns for our teachers? Gather some additional data, not just anecdotal hallway conversation-type of data, but obtain some actual data to the best of our ability as to why teachers have left our district. From there, we can plan. If that's around compensation and benefits, we can do some action planning around that. If it's around reward and recognition, those are things you can action plan and develop some plans for.
I don't think it's a surprise to any of us why people would leave a job. There's two main reasons. You don't get paid what you need to be paid, or you're overwhelmed. You're not being listened to, there's a problem in that regard. Both of these need to be addressed. And it needs to be addressed not just with buzzwords, but how all problems are addressed, especially at the local level, by talking to people. So yes, there need to be raised increases in teacher compensation. It should keep up with the cost of living. The cost of living in Solon has increased, we've all seen this. Teachers are part of this community, and they need to be kept part of this community and treated as part of this community. I also hear themes from the teachers that I've talked to. Lack of support, overwhelmed, time taken up evenings and weekends. They do not have time for self-care, which is especially important now. Existing supports, committees that went from K through 12 and subject areas that had existed have been taken away with no support for teachers put in place. Their voices need to be heard.
I echo what Mike said. Also add that I've spoken with many teachers as well, including a group of teachers associated with the Teachers Association. And I think the general thing that needs to be done first is just to regain their trust. The trust between the teachers and the school board, the trust between the teachers and the administration. One way of doing that, I think, would be to add those permissive items back in that were taken out in 2017 from the contract. As long as both parties agree, those things can be added back in. That would give them just cause standards to ensure due process and discipline. Grievance procedures, prep periods, all those things that were placed from the contract into the handbook can easily be put back into the contract just as a step towards regaining trust. And they need to feel appreciated for what they do. And currently, right now, it sounds like a good majority do not feel appreciated, do not feel empowered, or have any sense of autonomy at all.
So teacher retention, as we probably all know, is a challenge everywhere. I was talking to my sister, and she's in a different district, and they have the same challenges. Pat Downey has made it even worse. I think everyone feels overwhelmed. We've asked a lot of our teachers, and we were asking a lot beforehand. Heck, locally, you know, I think the last negotiation was contentious. We met with the teachers union, we sat down, we've had several visits since, and I think they've been good. And that resulted in an extension of the contract for a year, so we didn't have to go through negotiations this year. And one of the things that we, I talked earlier about the listening posts, those inputs along the community, we did get a lot of response, the plan for the next year. But pandemic occurred, was to try and move and have board members pop into the buildings and be available just to chat with people in the break room or at other venues. We hadn't gotten fully into the details. But I think we do want to make sure they feel appreciated. I think when we look at salaries, it's more complicated when comparing districts. You know, if we look at Mount Vernon, they have a lower starting salary and a lower top-end salary, but they've got a different distribution of experience and education levels.
All right, thank you. The next question, we'll start with Kathy. Do you have any plans in particular on how you would better the special education services in our school district?
That's a near and dear to my heart. So I, there's lots of things that I would love to use a lot more data to drive those decision makings, and especially for the youngest of learners. Reading is such an important part of learning, it is such an important part, especially the read-through three, read-by-three grade level. And so when you take a look, particularly in special education, how can we differentiate that learning for those students? How can we take them from first grade to second grade and be able to see a year, year and a half growth with them, with the teachers that we have, empowering them to make those connections that they have, utilizing their assets? Teaching is an art. We need to give the teachers back that art and allow them to really make a difference there. So special education needs to be wrapping those services around those students and really surfacing some of those early warning systems into the surface so that we can address those early and often.
So I certainly do not want to pretend to be an expert in special education. I am the daughter of a retired special ed teacher. So I heard a lot of discussions from my childhood. But as we talk about that, my first thought would be to just gather information, talk with our educators. What are their current concerns? Where do they feel like our gaps are? And to speak with our parents as well. Where do they feel that the gaps are for their students and their children? So really, that's seeking to understand. And then from there, as potential gaps are identified, again, look at some action planning. What are the things that we can put in place to help fill those gaps so we can ensure that we are meeting the needs of all of our students?
Let me start by saying that the parents I've talked to with kids in the special education programs have been glowing in what they have said about the special education department. This is not to say that it's perfect, but I absolutely want to commend the good work that our special education teachers have done. It needs to be recognized. In terms of what can be done better, special education, like anything, when you're dealing with individual students, has to be done on an individualized basis. It's just the way it works for anyone with a developmental disability, which again is near and dear to my heart and my experience. So I do not have any across-the-board suggestions by any means. It just comes back to talking to those parents, finding out more about what could be done for them, and talking with the teachers to find out whether there are community resources that could help them in their work, any other resources that might be made available to make special education even better for our kids.
Yeah, I am not a special ed expert by any stretch of the imagination. So I would be one that would need to talk to the experts and the teachers in the buildings and find out what it is they need in terms of staffing or curriculum or whatever it is that they are looking for. I do know that we need to keep in mind that special ed is a large spectrum and runs into the TAG program too. And I've heard a lot of people frustrated with the TAG program. It just needs more staff possibly, for that is my understanding. But again, I would have to do some more research in that and ask people who know more than I do about it. I do know that a group of teachers sent a letter to the board with concerns about a reading curriculum, and my understanding is that that letter was ignored. So I think that we need to be listening to the teachers' thoughts.
So I've got a little bit of experience with special education. Both of my sons were in the program. And I think it's a challenge. I think it does become very focused on the individual child and what they need. I remember one of the pieces of advice I got from my sister was, you need to advocate for your child because back then, the concern was that they would just stay in the program. And so one of the things I've been proud about in Solon is that the teachers haven't cared so much. Look at what has changed over the time, it seems like there's just been an increased focus on how do we move those kids up the ladder so that they're making progress and catching up with their peers? And I think that's been something I've been proud of that our staff has been able to do. And again, echoing some of the things I've heard, I commend our staff for that because it really is driven by the people there on a day-to-day basis, making those efforts to help our kids out.
Just one thing quick, special ed funding is hard to come by, so it makes it hard. Brief story, my youngest has an IP, she's in special ed. She's a learning disability. And she came home with 3.5 on math thing, and she's never had that, and she was in the regular classroom. And so it's a hard job. It's not an easy job. It's a hard job for us to manage because every person has their own individualized education plan. And Tim's right, our teachers are doing the best they can with what they have. And we, as a district, are doing the best we can. It's hard to recruit, especially level three special ed teachers. And I commend the associates that also work with those kiddos all the time, so.
Well, we've got a lot of non-experts up here when it comes to special education, and I'm one of them. And I want to echo Mike's comments and Dan's and say that in my discussions with parents in the community, Solon is doing a really good job, and I do commend the district for the work that's been done. My own experience or observation, and depending on the level of education or special education needed, parents have a lot on their plate, and it's really difficult for them to have time to reach out to the administration and talk about a tailored plan. They don't have an agency to reach the schools in all cases. I think the best thing we can do is to reach out to those parents as best we can. And as Dan said, all needs are different. And we have to just do our best to try and meet the needs of each individual student.
All right, thank you very much. I think everyone's had a chance to go first once already, so we're going back through again. Kathy, you'd have to answer first again. So I had a lot of questions around COVID and masking. I'm going to try and combine everything in one. Jody, maybe allow up to a minute and a half for responses on this. Can you do that? Thank you. Because there'll be a lot, possibly a lot to it. I want to give you guys a chance to answer if you want. Basically, what it comes down to from the questions is, do you support masking in the schools or not? And also, would there be a level of COVID transmission in which you would then support a mask mandate if you don't currently support it? And then I'm also going to throw in, there's a question that last fall, five students spoke at a board repeating an opposition of masking and school closing. What was their message about programming academics? So. Lot of information there. I'll just let you talk.
So I can see the question, just so I can make sure I understand it. Whether or not we support, or I as an individual, support masking.
Did you support masking? You know, is there a level of transmission which you would support masking? What do you think of the students' statements and messages about programming academics related to COVID and masking?
So I am in support of apparent choice. I'm in support of surfacing data that we need to understand whether or not that as a family, you can make that choice for you. Masks should not be mandated, they should not be discouraged either. That is my stance that I take. The reason for taking that stance is because of the students. The students need to see faces, they need to see facial expression. It is all part of their learning. Academics matter, and the social-emotional aspects of mattering. Mental health matters, all of that matters. And you wrap around that inside of a learning environment like a classroom, and it matters. My son, with hearing impairments, still is, at the younger of age, he relied heavily on reading lips. It is very vital to that and to his growth when he was a young child. Because of that, masks would not have been able to help him. So there is not a one-size-fits-all solution when it comes to masking. And so I would never support any kind of mask mandate in the Solon's community school districts. As far as the students and what their preference is, they too want to see the mask go away. When those five students came to the school board, that is what they were asking for. They were asking to maintain that they can still participate in their athletics and their music programs and the things that really excite them, that really cause them to be engaged. That is what we need in Solon.
So when I'm asked if I'm pro-mask or anti-mask, I would say that I'm neither. I support families making choices about masking when the current situation and our community COVID data allows for this. I would also support a mask mandate should we be at a point where all possible mitigation efforts are necessary in order to ensure that we can keep our students in the classroom and learning in person. That is my primary priority. I have served as a leader of Mercy Iowa City's COVID leadership team throughout the pandemic and have experienced firsthand how difficult it is to make these types of decisions day after day for the people that you serve. I also know that we must focus on how we can be adaptable to new information and agile in our communication as we continue to deal with changing data, changing expectations, changing recommendations. So at the end, my focus is on keeping our students in the classroom and focusing on whatever we need to do in order to keep our students learning in person.
This is a hugely divisive issue in our community. There is no answer that will satisfy everyone. But I hope that by giving you all a straight answer and you understanding why I think what I think, that you can respect that. I do support a mask mandate at this time because I do not pretend to be an expert. We have public health experts, and we should listen to them. The reasons I think this is because, not just I don't pretend to be an expert, but because what the experts say about the impact on kids with disabilities is extremely important to me. Disabilities are not just about hearing impairments. If that needs to be addressed, it absolutely needs to be addressed. But there are kids with asthma, there are kids with autoimmune disorders, and the evidence seems to be that these kids, even though COVID generally does not... these kids, even though COVID generally does not hurt kids nearly the way it's hurt adults, that it does affect those kids. And we need to be protecting those kids. What I come down to is that we are a community. And the most important rule to be in a community is love thy neighbor. COVID does not start and stop at the school doors. Kids bring it home. My daughter brought it home to her mom. It happens, it spreads, and it causes an impact on parents. And so, let's not try to reinvent the wheel or make all our own mistakes. Let's listen to experts, and when we can stop, let's stop.
I think I agree primarily with what Mike had to say there in terms of keeping in mind that COVID affects the whole community. I've had many community members approach me and actually want there to be masks in school, even though they're not in school, they're retired. But they may have health issues and come into contact with people in the community that, you know, have kids in school. At this point, I think that it's not gonna be as big an issue as it has been in the past. I think my view right now is that, you know, if we keep masks on kids that have not had the opportunity to get a vaccine, in other words, people 12 or under 12, you know, once the vaccine comes out for them, which sounds like it's gonna be early November, then, you know, they've had the chance to get a vaccine and, you know, probably can pull a mask mandate up at that point, is, I guess, what I'm thinking right at this moment. But I would agree with Mike in that, you know, we have experts, CDC, American Association of Pediatrics, that we should be listening to for those. I'm also in favor of keeping kids in school. And we saw when we had 67 kids out here a couple weeks ago, that that's not keeping kids in school. And that wouldn't have happened probably to that extent had we had masks in school. Kids would have remained in the classroom rather than being quarantined at home, along with affecting their family and their parents' work situation.
So at one level, it's a challenging question. My personal opinion is that we've been trying to give families the opportunity to make a choice. We're not preventing people from wearing masks. We're not requiring them to wear masks. The goal from the beginning has been to have an opportunity for kids to be in school. That's where we started last year. I think from a history standpoint, you know, we were focused as a district in having our school doors open and kids in school. That wasn't the goal of everybody in the community. I've heard from a lot of people who told us last year that we had to start online. It wasn't safe to do so. If we started, we were in person, we were irresponsible. And so I think there are challenges that we have to face. We have to make the decisions that are in front of us and make the best choice we can. And we've been veering on the side of giving families the choice this year. When we talk about the input from the students, I think that's a completely separate question at one level. But it is important, you know, we need to listen to our students. One of the things that we have done this last year is we've added into the board meeting a student representative from the high school. And so we're in the process of finishing that process. And so we will have a permanent voice at the board table, representing the students, to share their perspective, share their perspective with all the students, so it can factor into the decisions we make moving forward.
Yeah, a lot of similar things here. I'm a pro-choice for parents. As a school district, we gave parents choices though. So we allowed them the choice to keep their kids home and in school and online. We gave them the choice to send their kids to school with masks on. We did receive an email from one parent who said she felt like her son was being bullied. And so we dealt with that quickly because that's not the kind of district that we want to have. We gave kids choices to come to school without masks on. We gave teachers choices too. One of the things we found out when the kids worked in school is that they got behind. And kudos to this district and the teachers and the administration to get our kids to school last year and make up a lot of lost learning. As far as the students who spoke at our board meeting that night, the one and probably most poignant thing that we can say is, they said, if we're in school, we'll have masks on. If we're not in school, we won't have masks on. I can't police anything that doesn't happen outside this building. And so it's hard for me, for kids who go home and don't have masks on, come in. You know, I think, I think parents need to make those decisions themselves. And I think it's important that our community does support each other though, in whatever stance someone takes.
I would like to say that the school boards and administration had an incredibly difficult decision to make with this. And there is no solution that meets everybody's needs. And we can all be thankful that the silver lining with COVID is that it doesn't affect kids as much as it does adults. You know, a buzzword that I've been hearing a lot in the last few months since this school year started, this school year started specifically, not just in Solon, but people saying that they don't want to co-parent with the government, with the schools. They want to be able to have their individual choices for their own families. And to the greatest extent possible, I really want parents to have decision-making ability for their kids. However, I think when it comes to COVID, we have to have local control. And that means that individual parents making their own rules for the school is not applicable. We have to do what's best for the, for the community, for the health of our kids, and make sure that our schools stay open. We have many other requirements the same way with peanut or tree nut allergies or vaccines. My position on masking is that as long as the CDC or the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends it, then we should do it. And there is data from all over the country, and Iowa City, the closest, our closest neighbor here, we've had 10% of our kids just this year have COVID, even with the ones that are vaccinated. Iowa City, who has a mask mandate, has had roughly 1% or less. Hopefully, this isn't an issue. As vaccinations are gonna be available for those five and up, hopefully just right around the corner. By the time this board seats, the new, the new board takes office, we won't have this issue.
All right. Thank you. And can we go back one minute now for the next question, please? Next question, we're gonna start with Michael. And the question, the board superintendent, the board slash superintendent relationship is a critical component in ensuring we have a high-functioning team. How effectively will you be able to work with the current administration if elected, and what are a few steps you could take to achieve this?
So the board superintendent relationship is a, is a difficult one because it's both supervisory. The board is there to set policy and to ultimately be the boss over the district. But it also has to be collaborative. One fortunate thing about being in litigation is that every day, I have to work alongside people whose interests are straight opposed to my own and to what my client wants. And so you have to get very good at finding compromise where you can, at listening to people, understanding why they want what they want, so that you can, you can find areas of agreement. And then when disagreements happens, because it always happens, that you still find ways to work together. And again, that just comes down to listening. It comes down to professionalism. These are all things that I have plenty of experience in and would certainly bring that professionalism to any relationship that the superintendents or other board members or the community.
As some of the people who works in law enforcement, I also have a long history of working with people and dealing with situations where I am in disagreement with, you know, the people that I'm working with. And have to come up with ways to collaborate and resolve those conflicts. And so I think that the superintendent and board relationship needs to be a collaborative one. However, I think the board also needs to do its job in terms of keeping that administrator accountable for what he or she is doing. So whether that's in terms of in-depth evaluations, you know, allowing 360 evaluations where staff turns and evaluates administrators, doing whatever it is to, we can to open up that communication and have professional discourse with that person so that we can work together.
I think this is a good question. I think it's a, it's a challenging relationship, obviously. There's been, during my time here, there's been four superintendents, Brad Bernard, Daryl Smith, Sam Miller, and now Davis Seidel. I've all served in that role. And each relationship was different. I think communication is the key, obviously. And as Dan indicated, you know, having those frank conversations. And I let the superintendent know when I'm happy about something. And I share that information. One of the things that we've tried to do is, is to learn together. And part of that is the board understanding what its role is. And it's a lot different than what it was when I, when I thought, when I joined the board the first time and you sit down, and you get this pamphlet from the Iowa Association of School Board that says, these are your jobs, and these are not your jobs. And our job is not to micromanage. We are a board, and our job is not the day-to-day operations of the school. That was the hardest thing to learn as a new board member was, I can't, dictate when trash gets picked up in the school buildings.
I echo kind of what everybody says. This is a difficult role to have. I think what our board has done a good job of, everybody meets with Davis on their own time. Davis has been pretty open to late-night phone calls and me popping into his office when I had concerns. We don't always air our dirty laundry in front of you guys, okay? But I want you to know there's some tough conversations that happen, right? Unfortunately, the assumption is that we don't have tough conversations because we don't tell you about them. Now, it couldn't be farther from the truth. We've had some difficult things to work through together. In some ways, it's made the board much closer. But it is a role that is a balance for any board.
Dean, can you repeat the question for me, please?
Sure thing. The board superintendent relationship is a critical component in ensuring we have a high-functioning team. How effectively will you be able to work with the current administration if elected, and what are some steps you would take to achieve this?
Well, as I said earlier, the role of the board is to work with the community educators and basically establish the district's vision. The superintendent's role, as I understand it, is to implement the board's vision. And obviously, there's a component of the superintendent's role that's the day-to-day decision-making, dealing with issues that arise that don't need to come to the board's level of, level of discussion. I've heard a lot of issues that we have in Solon. I've heard that we have a poor work environment for teachers. And I've heard that we have tactics that are employed by Davis that, I don't, I don't know if they're true, but it's, it's what I've heard. And I'd like to, I'd like to talk to Davis. I'd like to understand more of what his job entails. And obviously, the board and the superintendent have to work together to, to make sure that the school functions properly and that all the actions are carried forward.
One of the foundations of any relationship is trust. I have to be able to trust you, and you have to be able to trust me, so that we can build the foundations from a collaborative approach to build that foundation that we need and necessary to the stable environment that we create. And so when I can count on you and I can believe that you're gonna have an open and honest conversation with me, then I in turn can have an open and honest conversation back to you. So as, as a member of the board, we need to make sure that we have open and honest conversations with each other and superintendent. And it's not one-sided. It's collective. Not one person makes a decision, but we do so unanimously in a consensus. And we do so with the hearts and minds of the students in mind. So that is the fostering of the relationship that we need to do and a foundation built on trust.
When I think of a high-functioning board administrator relationship, I think of a few key components. One of those is open and frequent communication. The second is ongoing and respectful, honest feedback. These are those difficult conversations that Dan is referring to. And that's an essential component. And then the third is all of these things being done in the spirit of collaboration with focusing on putting our students first. Those are the key components to that relationship. These are all skills that I utilize regularly in my professional life and believe that I could easily bring that to the board. And those are the responsibility of all board members, as well as the superintendent. I believe that everyone is responsible to bring those things to the table.
All right. Thank you. Well, our time here is coming to an end, so we are done with the questions. And we will do two-minute closing statements now. And we are going to start with, I'm Brown.
Well, I get to open and close, so I'll keep mine relatively short because I know you guys have other things you need to attend to tonight as well. I want to thank everyone who organized the event. Thank you all for showing up. I know you have other things to do. I think there's a celebration of a cross-country win tonight that could happen. And I think there's a lot of support in this community, and I want to continue to reiterate that. You know, I think it's this community and you people that have come out tonight that are, that make us strong. And my hope at the end of this is that we can all pull back together and move forward as a community. How can I prepare remarks for the end? For many years, the school district has drawn families to our community for high-quality education and co-curricular activities. As we look to the election, the question for the community is, do we want to continue the path we have been on, the past decade, focusing on improving educational opportunities? This has drawn families to our community. If you want a board that will continue to provide leadership to improve quality of learning for all of our students, I would encourage you to carefully consider which candidates are committed to that mission. And I ask you to vote for me.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you again to everyone here, all the candidates, Dean, the economist, all of you for coming. It's been an honor to serve you for the last eight, out of these last 10 years. This is a great community. If this is my last time on the board, I will be honored to have served. That being said, I will tell you what I will do if you elect me. I will ensure that we will take every student where they are. We will move them forward. I will ensure that we continue with the mental health initiatives that we have done for these kids. And if you're elected and you find out how robust these are, you'll be pretty impressed. I will continue to be financially responsible to this community. I will give parents a choice when it comes to COVID. And I think most importantly, I will respect everyone in this community. We talk about it. We're divided. I understand. But I'll tell you a few things I won't do. I won't participate in Facebook pages that are secret. I will not participate in people having our board members recorded without their knowing. I just don't think that's healthy for our community. And I never have, and I never will do those things. If you want to vote for me, those are the things you will get from me.
I also want to thank Dean and Markner and the other candidates tonight. When I decided to run for school board this summer, a lot of people reached out to me and said that this election would be about COVID and that their vote would be determined by a candidate's position on banning masks in schools. And at first, I agreed with that. I've taken a different turn, and this election has become about so much more to me. I want to share a portion of a resignation letter from a former fourth-grade teacher, Maria Schrader, who left our district in 2019. She gave me permission to share this, and it was shared with the board at the time of her departure. And I quote, "Not one single board member or administrator in Solon has asked me why I'm leaving. I'm one of several dozen people who have either been interviewing elsewhere or have already resigned. As leaders in this community, I would hope you are asking these employees why. I'm leading to seek an environment that encourages creativity, asking questions, and teacher leadership. I'm hopeful to find a place that values all disciplines and understands the variety of ways our students need support. I'm looking for an environment where teachers are trusted and valued, an environment where my colleagues and I don't feel afraid to ask questions or are reprimanded for sharing opinions. I'm looking for a workplace where people are judged on their merits and their abilities and not who their friends are. I'm looking for a district where principals are allowed to lead their buildings without micromanagement. And I'm looking for a workplace where colleagues can work openly and honestly with one another, not in competition with one another. I'm looking for an environment that will value the ideas and dedication I bring to the table. I feel if this district failed Maria, and there'll be more that follow her if we don't change. She's not allowing her feelings and her words to be volumed as to what can be improved. For this reason, I'm asking for your vote. I will ask questions of those who know the business of educating our kids the best, and more importantly, listen to and value their responses. This board can and needs to be better and needs to be accountable to those it serves. Test scores and tax rates and better board leadership awards are not the only are not the only metrics that determine the overall health of the district. Please vote for change and vote for me. Thank you."
I love Solon, and I applaud all of the seven candidates to stick their neck out and be brave and come up and fight for what is right for the kids and for the best school that is in Johnson County. And I love education. It is the greatest gift you can give a child, and I want nothing more than a child to walk in each and every day into their classroom with a smile on their face, holding their head high in confidence because they found a place where they belong, and they found a place that meets their unique needs, and they're able to face the challenges of the day, where classrooms thrive, where they thrive with authentic connections between the teacher and the students and the parents. And we can grow and maintain that intimacy when it comes to small classroom sizes, where teachers use real-life data to live in those aha moments, and that the students are seen through those transitional years. I'm not running for a political agenda, nor a hidden agenda, but I am running for a chance to give back to the community and to provide a stable environment that is constantly looking for ways to improve. I bring a collaborative and a pragmatic approach with a unique perspective, having served decades in a business educational realm. As mentioned before, I always seek first to understand and to be an active listener through curiosity and questioning, to get to the heart of the problem that we're solving for and understand what success looks like, so that we can make sure that we are going through the, that we are going through those tough questions and ask those tough questions before we make those radical decisions. And with everything that we do and at the heart of everything do, we need to maintain that the students are the focus of everything. And so I encourage you to please go out on Friday or on Tuesday, November 2nd, and get yourself out there. Again, thank you all for taking your time to attend our forum tonight. In a world where many are so very busy, your time and your attention to this election and to our school and our students matters, and your vote matters as well. I hope that after listening to the conversation here tonight, you have a better understanding of why I'm running for school board and what qualities I would bring to our board. My focus is on people first, with what is best for our students at the forefront. Communication, transparency, serving as a listener and a voice for the community as a whole, not just those viewpoints that I agree with, as well as a deeper dive into budget practices and teacher retention, are all important. I believe that a school board should be nonpartisan, and I am not running for school board in order to engage in any partisan politics or promote a political position. Solon has been my home since 1993, and I seek this position only to serve our students and our community.
Yes, thank you all for being here. It is tremendously heartening to see so many faces out there, sometimes smiling, not always, and know that people care so much about this wonderful community. That is what keeps us strong, even when we don't agree. If I haven't made it clear already, I hope to make it clear now, I would like to hear from you. I don't know how much time I'll have tonight. I do have home and family to get back to, but I am interested in what people in this community think and why they think it, because that's where service comes from. Solon's a great community, and the best way to serve this community is to work to make it even better. Our school's in a strong financial position, we're positioned for growth, we have great teachers. We need to build on this, not let it slip away. Of the four teachers my daughter has had, kindergarten through third grade, two of them are no longer there. The principal is no longer there. This is what started me asking questions. We need to help our teachers so that they can help our students, because the teachers who've left are the ones with the most experience and expertise. Our teachers are our infrastructure for our school. We cannot replace their experience easily. The teachers who are doing the one-on-one, this is how it already happens, they're the ones spending the most time with our kids. We have to help our teachers so they can help our students. But our students are in a good position. We can do this work, and we can make Solon better. So thank you very much, and I hope to speak with some of you after, after this forum. Thank you.
I too want to thank everybody for listening tonight. I, I really do believe that every candidate here is here with the same general goal in mind, and that is to make our school district great for our community. Part of doing the best job possible is looking at areas for improvement and determining what can be done to address them. As a female leader in an almost entirely male department, I'm accustomed to scrutiny, and I'm not afraid to ask hard questions and expect answers to those questions. My job demands a high level of integrity that I would carry with me to this board position. I know in working in a public service career that it's impossible to please everyone all the time. Sometimes you have to make unpopular decisions, and the same, I imagine, would likely apply to being a school board member. However, I believe my experience in collaborating with and supervising a wide range of people will be a benefit to the board. I'm professional, and I'm good at setting and maintaining long-range goals while simultaneously putting out small fires here and there along the way. My priorities include bettering communication and transparency and taking steps to improve overall employee morale. Issues that involve the school's human capital are difficult, because solving them involves wrestling with values and opinions. They require a different type of critical thinking. I am willing to be what is may require to tackle those types of issues, because they are absolutely vital to the well-being of the school district, made up of professional faculty and staff, deserving students, and a worthy community.
Thank you, everybody. I'd like to thank Margaret and The Economist again for hosting us, Jody and the students for keeping time for us, Keith for keeping us so everyone can hear us back there. And thanks to everyone for showing up tonight and submitting such great questions. I apologize that we didn't get to all of them. Hopefully, you got to hear a lot of good answers on a lot of good topics, and we only had so much time tonight. And let's hear it for the candidates up here. Thanks to all you for having the courage to run and the passion to help our district and our students.